It is eight thirty-five or eight thirty-four. This is the regular meeting of the Town and McCain Board of Selectmen Tuesday, March twenty-three. And this is a virtual meeting. I assume. And first item on our agenda are the minutes from our regular meeting on March ninth. Kathleen, do you have any comments or corrections?
No, it's great.
Want to move to approve them?
I'll move.
Okay, I second, and you and I both approve them. Public comments, being a virtual meeting, we will take comments only by email and read them in the course of the meeting. I have one comment by email that we received over the past few days, and I'll just mention that, discuss that at the end of the meeting. But if anyone has comments and wishes to submit them or questions, the email address is B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. And Tucker will watch for comments and will read them before the end of the meeting if we receive any. Again, it's B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. Sidewalks for three and four. Tiger, are you doing this or Maria?
I'll be doing these. Good morning.
Morning.
So this first item is for the purchase of brick paving, brick pavers, the material itself from a local supplier, Paramount Stone. We typically supply developers in town with materials that we'd like to see them use, especially if they're an upgrade. So if they were looking to put in concrete sidewalks, we supply the brick pavers and ask them to put the pavers in instead of the concrete sidewalk. They pay for the labor and we pay for the material. This has been a situation or a deal that we've had from our previous town planner, Steve Kleppin, instituted about ten years ago. This is for the purchase of brick pavers for Forest Street and Locust Street, the intersection of Forest and Locust for the development there. It's for thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents from Paramount Stone. The developers there, they're working on the sidewalk as we speak on the granite curb that we had provided for them. And they'll put the pavers in behind it once we're able to approve this contract.
So this is technically Locust and Forest?
Locust and Forest, yeah. So it comes, yeah, that entire corner.
I noticed yesterday that his inbox is being done with pavers.
Correct. They're being redone, I should say. Yeah, we supplied the original work along the roadside. Then they had an existing curb cut that they wanted to take out, and then we do redo some additional work behind on their property. So there, that's a kind of a, an extension of what they had done prior. They realized that due to COVID, they actually had a lot more people outside dining, and they wanted to kind of beautify that patio area.
Got you. Okay, Kathleen, any questions on the Forest Street?
Not on the Forest Street, but the sidewalk management program, Tiger. Can you just remind us, how big is that sort of fund, if you will? Instead of have a specified amount?
We, we received three hundred thousand dollars last year. And in the past two years prior to that, after that, it had dropped off, I think, to a hundred and then fifty prior to that. So we've been at about three hundred for the past couple of years. This, this year in the budget, we've requested five hundred. But that was for some new sidewalks as well. The three hundred was stipulated to only be for reconstruction of existing sidewalks.
Okay, so this, this falls into the new category?
No, this falls in the reconstruction of the existing. It was, there was an existing sidewalk there.
Check. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I see the next join us. Good morning, Nick.
Hey, guys. It's my T issues.
We're on number three, the forestry sidewalks, and we approved the minutes. So do you have any questions about the forestry sidewalks, papers?
No.
Okay, so I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter to contract with Karma Stone for thirteen thousand, three twenty-five eleven for the purchase of brick pavers for the corner of Forest Street and Locust Avenue.
I'll second.
Kathleen seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Mr. Navas?
Thank you.
Old Stanford Road.
This is for design services, engineering and surveying work for an extension of the walk between Bristow, Bird Sanctuary and Park Street itself. It's along Route one oh six, which is a state road, which requires full drawn engineering scale plans. Capesis De Angelis has done excellent work for us in the past. They did Main Street, they did Park Street and Richmond Hill. So they're ultimately aware of that entire area for us. It's an extension of the survey work that they already performed, and then an extension of the engineering work they've already performed through to Park Street. The total is for sixteen thousand dollars, and this will allow us to go to the state for possible permitting and approval of this sidewalk extension.
So this is a lotsip funded?
This is not. This is, this will be town funded. We could certainly look for an extension of the lots at that point, but right now the lots has moved past West Cog into D L T approval status.
I'm confused, and I agree. I thought, I thought the
Through to, through to Park Street, it is a lotsip project. This is from Park to Old Stanford Road. We could ask it to be added to it.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is past the Bristow.
This is, this is to Bristow from Park, the intersection of Park and Old Stanford.
I'm sorry, okay, now I understand.
Yes, yeah, the lotsip one is from, is on Park from Old Stanford all the way to one twenty-four Main Street, Old Oak Ridge.
Does it, does this include the pull off onto for Bristow?
Yes, it does. We, we included Maria's sketches, both sketches, and we're asking him to incorporate those into the plan. So it'll be an entire sidewalk and parking area plan.
Okay, any questions for Tiger, Kathleen or Nick?
Just one. How many parking spaces are we anticipating?
Four. So there'll be four parallel spaces. We did three separate looks as to a ninety-degree turn in, an angled turn, and then parallel, and actually turns out that utilizing parallel spaces takes up the least amount of green space, square footage wise. The amount of area we would need to pull in.
School buses can pull up there.
Correct. School buses could pull in and then drop off, yeah, if a class wanted to go in and do a walk through Bristow. I know now that they're looking at putting in some educational signage in there, as far as some birdhouses and some educational signers for different types of birds to be looking for there and their habitat. I think it'd be a nice kind of etch on for, for students to go in and take a look.
Thank you.
For this second, second oldest bird sanctuary in America.
Very cool.
Okay. Many further questions, Nick?
None here.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into contract with Capesis De Angelis for survey and design services in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. Second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? That's approved. Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cheryl, are you up for A D P?
I am. Good morning. If I believe on your tablet, you have the A D P contract every two to three years, we do a contract with them. I am happy to say that we have down almost twenty-five percent. The contract that you are looking at, they stated we came down eighteen percent. But last year we were billed over seventy-five thousand, so we negotiated with them pretty hard, and we were able to get our contract down to fifty-seven thousand. A D P covers our payroll, our time in attendance, and our H R portal, which is the hiring and all the benefits. So I am pleased with this, and we are very happy with A D P services, and I'm hoping that you will approve this contract, and it goes from six twenty-one to six twenty-three.
But it's fifty-seven thousand dollars a year.
Correct.
Questions?
Carol, just one for me, sorry. So some of the reduction, was that because we eliminated some of the functions? I'm looking at some of the ones that said terminated, enhanced H R, recruitment, talent acquisition. So is that because we had them utilized somewhere else, and we didn't, no longer needed them at A D P, or had to be reduced that?
We, they were charging us for what they call their onboarding system, and there's a good part of that that we do in-house with I nines and tax forms, and there was no need for that. We also had found out that they were not archiving our members, so every time an employee would be a summer employee, we would archive them, and they would still count them because every person is counted. So we were able to get them to look at some of these numbers and drop a lot of the, like our summer staff, we have a hundred and fifty that come on in late May, and we archive them by August. They were still counting them. So once we met with them and went through it, we were able to save in a lot of these areas.
Great. Thank you.
Any further questions? If not, I move, we approve the contract with A D P payroll services for the annual amount of fifty-seven thousand, three fifteen thirty-nine. Effective June second.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, so now we have the pleasure of having Chairman of the Parking Commission, Keith Ritchie, with us, as well as Stacy, our Parking Department Manager, Supervisor, and Tucker's also involved with parking. So the parking program renewals, Keith, why don't you give us a quick summary of what you did, what you recommend from the Parking Commission, which minister test or tablets?
Yeah, thank you. I did put a couple of slides together, and if I can share my screen, I will, we'll see if I can. And I think it'll expedite things. So again, we are hoping there'll be some return to normal. Our recommendations regarding renewal applications for the commuter parking lots. So again, these are the lumberyard lot, the Richmond Hill lot, and the Towneage Hill lots. And we're recommending that renewals should be begun on July first, twenty twenty-one, which would be the normal next fiscal year in terms of parking with the rates unchanged from those that we had set before the COVID crisis. And I'll go through the detail in just a second, but let me move on regarding the commercial parking lots. So again, these are the Park Street lot, the telephone lot, and the Morse Court lot. And again, that we would charge at the rates that we had agreed for the period before the COVID crisis. And we're also recommending that the experimental program of free downtown worker parking permits for the Center and Locust lot be extended for six months from July first through the end of December, twenty twenty-one. And then we'll reevaluate and see if we want to make that a permanent program or not. And we'll, maybe we'll have had some experience with the construction at the library to see how that's all working. So this chart shows the numbers. So again, going from left to right, you see the names of the parking lots, you see the rates which we had originally proposed, the impact of the state sales tax. Then the center column shows kind of what we've been doing, charging zero for Locust and Center in that experimental program, and zero for the commuter parking lots, because, you know, they weren't really being used. And now where it's highlighted in this, this area, here's what the town will be charging. This is what the state is getting through their sales tax, and this is the total on the far right, what, what the permit owners will actually have to pay. And, you know, we will see if we have potentially had our, our peak parking permit revenue. We'll see as time goes forward whether or not we ever get back to like the lumberyard being full like it was and with a waiting list like it has been. Right now, you know, that lot is hardly being utilized. And just to show you kind of what the impact on the town would be, this shows the revenue data for most recent period. And you can see just the lumberyard lot alone generated four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of revenue, which is not insignificant in our town. And, you know, whether or not that will continue, we'll see. I'm hoping that we'll get back there. That would be a good thing for, I think, the town and, of course, the area, but I'm not so sure. And so these are, you know, this is what we hopefully to reclaim in the next fiscal year. Obviously, we've forever, or at least while we have the experimental program, we've given up the revenue from the Locust Lot and the Center Lot, but that was pretty insignificant in the scheme of all parking revenue. So those are our recommendations. Again, the real thing is we're not increasing rates from the pre-COVID era. We're keeping them flat, and we'll see how it works. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Can you just remind me, how much of the Locust Lot has been used in the past for commuters using the train, parking there, walking across?
Well.
And will that be changed at all?
Right now, it's not being used at all.
Right, right.
As, as a commuter lot. Historically, there was a period, I'm aware of, where they used the Locust Lot as a commuter lot. I don't know if that was before we had the lumberyard lot. But yeah, there was a period that I'm aware of, but I mean, that was at least.
Hey, Keith, I was here. I was here.
I used it.
They offer me the Locust Lot as a commuter, and I don't, I drove to Darien instead. It's a long walk.
Yeah. Yeah, so I don't envision that. Because, to my mind, we have the, we have the big wonderful lumberyard lot. I think the lot that, that if you're thinking about a change in use down the road, if there's less demand, would be the Richmond Hill lot. Because it is already the less favored lot. You have the choice between the lumberyard lot or the Richmond Hill lot. Everyone would take the lumberyard lot. And some would even prefer the Towneage Hill lot, because then you're in, you know, if you're in that part of town. Of course, right now, we're lucky to have the Richmond Hill lot, because I don't know where Clark would be parking some of his construction vehicles during his project without that lot.
The reason for my question was actually not, it's just, is, is this schedule now providing an opportunity who, who people want to have free parking, if you will, to park in Locust and then walk over to the train station?
Clearly, that was a concern of ours, and so that's why we, they, you know, they don't just park there for free. They have to get a permit.
They'll have to get the permit. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Experiment is working very well to get the downtown employees from restaurants and shops and stuff off the two-hour parking or other lots. And so, you know, I'm glad we're recommending that we extend that for another six months and see how that works. Nick, do you have other questions?
Couple of questions. I know we're primarily focusing on commuter lots. But one question I have, Keith, is at what point are you guys going to look at, you know, kind of taking the experiment of free parking downtown generally and extending that you know, in perpetuity? That's the first question. The second question is, at what point is the Parking Commission going to determine what the new normal is? And by that, I mean, at what point are you going to take a look at the lumberyard, say, and determine that, hey, you know, for the foreseeable future, maybe forever, we're going to see a twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent reduction in usage? Because, you know, folks just aren't going into the city as much. I know that people will tend to, if you do go in twice a week or three times a week or once a week, the tendency will be to keep your commuter pass, just so you have the opportunity to use it and not face the hassle of having, you know, having to find a spot. But I mean, this is a paradigmatic shift, I think, for all of us. And when I say us, I mean commuters. I myself, you know, foresee my probably, probably going into the office maybe two and a half times a week. I don't know what the over under is, two, three. And I think I speak for a heck of a lot of commuters when I say that. So I, you know, we talk about returning to normal. I don't think we'll ever return to what we had before, where you, you, on a Tuesday afternoon, you drive by the lumberyard, and it's completely full. Just don't see.
You know, I share that, that view or that concern, however you want to characterize it. Let me, let me circle back. Your first question was about, do you see us getting to charging zero for the commercial permits? And no, I don't. And the reason is, when we weren't charging for like the Morse Court lot, which was just, let's face it, a few months ago, that lot was overfilling, and again, with the downtown workers and with everyone, and then the local merchants were getting upset that there weren't, there wasn't parking for their customers, because those were filling up. The people that are buying those commercial permits are, to a great degree, real estate agents who want to be able to go in and out of the Morse Court lot if they're down over there, or the Park Street lot if they're up over there, and they can afford it. In fact, anybody who's paying for those, it's not an economic issue for them. It's a convenience issue. And we haven't seen any, any problem with the demand for those lots. They've gone right back up to what they were pre-COVID. So, and I think it's, so if we don't charge, I think we will, we'll basically be defeating our own experiment with having the free parking in Center and Locust, because there's no incentive then, you know, to park in the, in the free parking. So no, I don't see that changing. In, in terms of the commuter parking lot, you know, we did have a waiting list for the lumberyard, so I'm hoping it'll still be full. I could see where we might, because people are using it less. Well, maybe we'll go back to, if you recall, there's a time when we would triple sell the lumberyard lot. We might get to where we quadruple sell the lumberyard lot. It'll, so that's one result we could get, and in fact, then we might get more revenue. Another result we could get is that we find that there's a little more price elasticity, and we may want to reduce the price for some of those, you know, for those lots. But I don't want to, you know, I hate to guess when we're going to have the real life experiment if you, you know, accept our recommendations. And we'll have, in four months, five months, we'll have a better idea. I guess I've learned what appears to, so often to be common sense about parking doesn't work out that way, and you're the way you learn your way forward is to do experiments, and so that's why we're recommending these rates.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have to admit, I'm a little dubious about whether that many people want to sign up for a full year on July first, so.
We'll find out.
Well, that's the point. We're going to go, we're going to go entirely electronic this year, like we did with the transfer shape permits. And to some extent, so I think we ought to approve these today, but maybe be a little bit sensitive to whether people are telling us that they, they don't plan to go back yet. And whether now, at the, you know, when we have to pull the plug on May or June to, to pull the trigger, pull the, pull the trigger to, to tell people that they have to re-up for July first, that we perhaps reevaluate and see whether people don't, in fact, want to sign up for a year. Maybe so.
Or they may want a lesser price.
Yeah, yeah, or maybe, you know, maybe there's some way to on the one hand, we, I think we need to make sure we promise people that if they're on the, on the lumberyard, in the lumberyard, and they want to defer, that they can keep their place in line to keep the lumberyard.
We do do that already, Kevin, if somebody turns it in, so.
But I think to some extent, it's going to be a brave new world as to whether or not people are willing to pay an annual fee for the privilege of parking the lumberyard. People may just assume perhaps, you know, so again, I think we're, we ought to, we ought to approve what's being recommended, but kind of see based upon the response we get, whether people would like a different deal. And I, I, I've, I've thought about, you know, encouraging that we do a survey of people as to what they really want. Because I do think we're going to find relatively few people signing up, starting back to Manhattan on July first.
Stacy, I'm sorry, you said people are being given the opportunity to defer?
We have always had, had this program where somebody gave up a permit because they were no longer commuting for one reason or another that it always allowed us to move down on the waitlist, because if somebody wasn't using it, we could put somebody in that in the lumberyard, especially with the lumberyard. But if somebody was giving it up, we didn't want to penalize them for doing that, and if they ever needed it down the line, they would be reinstated back into that lot. So, and it didn't matter what timeframe that was. It could be a year, it could be five years. We would reinstatement, state them back into that lot. Technically, they would jump to the head of the line and get back.
I think that's great. I did not know that.
Yeah.
And, and I think it's important to get that out there, to Kevin's point, because I do think, you know, there will be a lot of people who, you know, hey, I'm not going back to work until twenty twenty-two until everybody's vaccinated or unity, blah, blah, blah. And I think it's really important that that, that fact, which is a great fact, is, 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 you know, is thrown out there, and people understand that.
Yeah. One more thing, I probably should have mentioned that, because Stacy has told me this, because she's studying studies. All the other surrounding towns have already gone back to charging their normal rates. And so we are the last ones to be getting on board that train. Now, I mean, I agree with all the concerns that we are a different town, but these other places have already gone back to charging full price for their permits.
Actually, Keith, it'd be interesting, Stacy, I'd like you to check with Darien and see what kind of experience, experience they're having.
Everybody, I, I, I have, everybody is renewing their permits.
What, what's the usage?
What's the usage?
Stacy, what's the usage?
Um, I can reach out to my contact there. I'm not sure she would be able to give me that, but I will reach out to her and see if she can give me any kinds of usage, but she did say that people are renewing.
Yeah, I'd like to understand what Westport and Darien and even Greenwich are experiencing with their, you know, because I think
The usage.
I think we need to be flexible, and I also talked a couple weeks ago to the CEO of Boxcar. They're still in business, and they're looking forward to people going back to the trains. I talked to the father, Rob, and the St. Louisers would like to continue their, their parking for eighty or ninety people at, at at St. Louis, so I think there's a lot at play here in terms of what we can expect people to want to do. Go ahead, Kathleen.
Stacy, thank you. Can you just maybe help us clarify? So if someone new was coming into town and they were looking to take up a space, let's say it was October first, are they given a pro-rata share of the permit, or do they have to pay for the full year?
No, prorated.
Prorated.
It's always prorated for the time that they come into the permit year.
So whether you're new or renewing, you can go when you're ready to get back to traveling in a, in a more regular basis. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, yes.
So you don't have to have the permit effective July first?
No, no. So if somebody, let's say they, they knew that they weren't commuting for another six months and wanted to defer it, like I said, they would be then reinstated at a prorated rate.
Right, okay. That makes sense.
Stacy, do we, do we still have waiting lists?
For the lumberyard in Richmond, we do, yes.
But the expectation is that potentially people could not only opt out, but just say, look, I'm moving to Florida to get away from, you know, Connecticut to Axle Seg. And I'm out. I'm not deferring. I'm out.
Right.
You, so the expectation is you will get a cohort of those folks who will just say, you know, I've moved out of town or plan to move out of town. I'm never going to go back into the city. Don't need to, you know, if I need to go into the city for the day, I'll just pay whatever fare. You, the expectation is that you will get a substantial number or a material number of individuals doing that, correct?
Um, yes, my, my feeling is like everybody else's feeling is that commuting will not look the same as it did pre-COVID. And we saw a trend of people using the permits less, more people working from home even pre-COVID. We would see the usage of the lots Thursday and especially Friday go down tremendously, and this was even pre-COVID. So we are going to see a change in usage, and we will have to watch that, watch how many people want to give it up because they're not commuting at this time. But again, we'll have to be careful as far as going down on the waitlist as well, because if people do go back to commuting more and want their permits, and we already gave it, we, it's a fine balance. So it all has to be looked at very carefully and move slowly, because it is a new because it is a new commuting world right now.
And you guys, Keith and Stace, you guys have done a great job, you know, during this pandemic, dealing with this sea change, right? It's impacted parking, COVID's impacted parking as much as anything else in, in town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So I think our communication here is going to be very important as to how we tell people what their options are.
Yes.
Keith, when does your commission meet again? In April or May?
May.
Yeah, in May.
So we will be working on the renewal process. We're going to send out emails to everyone and let them renew online. And, but the communication that we make and what their options are their rights to grandfathering and their rights to, you know, perhaps use Boxcar instead if they're going to have limited need. I think it's going to be very important how we communicate this whole process.
Yeah. Because it's electronic now, we can, you know, we can add a lot more to our message. You know, inexpensively and effectively.
So with that, I recommend a move that we approve the recommendations of the Parking Commission to have the renewal effective July 1st. Caveat subject to possibly changing our minds if people tell us in great numbers that they're not going back July 1st. And also with the rates remaining the same as recommended. That's both commuter and, but didn't we already act on the commercial lots back in January or?
Only through the end of June.
Through the end of June. Okay. So, so if that's, you know, what they, what the Parking Commissioner recommended, I'm, I'm moving that we approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
We'll have the ministry reflect what we actually approved, so.
Thank you. I'll send you my spot.
Thank you, Keith.
Yeah, Keith, send it. Thank you.
I, I, I neglected to move at the beginning of the meeting to add an item to the agenda. So I would, we have a police vehicle equipment installation item. And I move that we amend the agenda to add that to the agenda after, as item after number seven.
Second year.
All in favor? So next, next item on the agenda, we go to the YMCA. The Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed and approved the proposed leases for one year. We are still, you know, the YMCA has been heavily impacted by COVID in terms of the impact on their financial status. And therefore, the discussion about having a further public-private partnership with, with respect to the use and the staffing of, of Puanus Park during the summer is, is being deferred for another year until YMCA returns to normality. And so the terms of the lease are basically designed to, you know, historically, even though they'd used the park for 60 years, there was no lease in place. So last year's lease was a special one-year deal because of COVID. We don't expect the restrictions that were in place last summer to, to be in place. If that changes, we will go back and come back with a revised proposed lease. But we, they will return to their normal footprint with the addition of the Bacon House. And so if, if you have any questions about that proposed lease, Parks and Rec recommended it and I personally recommend it.
So Kevin, just to clarify, so this is a differently, this is a brand new lease or is this one that was two years ago?
Changed from last year because last year they had the whole campus, which because of the restrictions on COVID, you couldn't have people entering the camp. Which, some controversy, you know, residents felt they were being excluded from Puanus last year. While the YMCA camp was in operation, that, that will not occur this summer. And the, but also the opportunity to have the Y participate with us in a staffing of the park during the week, especially when, in, in my experience, observation, there's relatively little use. But anyway, the economics, the, the Parks and Rec Recreation Bar has scaled back their, their, their expense for staffing the, the park during the summer, I think from $95,000 to $57,000. And so really this is a one-year lease. It's, we'll do, we'll redo another lease next summer. It could be different based upon the circumstances of whether the Y is interested in doing a, a larger public-private partnership.
Could you just, someone to comment on the section that says areas of exclusive use and shared use? And then it looks like they're given an option in terms of whether or not they can have folks included in the lease premises, treated as a shared area or excluded or available only during extended hours for a fee of $500. What's likely to happen there?
Playground is in fact not something they choose to use. They have the option to use it, but their campers are for the most part actively engaged in activities and they don't need to use the playground. So the playground is shared use because the public obviously has the right to come in and use not only the swimming portion of the pond, but also the, the playground.
Right.
As a public park and, but the Y told us they don't have an interest in opting to, to use the playground itself for their campers.
They do. And so this will provide them that option.
They have the option. They want to, you know, get, get items.
Okay. I just didn't, I wasn't clear was as to what these choices were all about. So, okay. It's for the use of the play, playground area.
Exactly.
If they wanted, okay. I understand. Thank you.
I think it's just a playground. Is it also the covered, what's, what's the other covered pavilion, Tiger?
There's a small pavilion in the parking area that they utilize as well.
Yeah. I mean, they used the Mary B cabin with a separate arrangement with the Girl Scouts. And for offices as well as, and they use the, so they have the house. Houses is attached to the locker rooms, which they've always used in the past. So essentially, the public has the right to use the pond and the playground and the parking. And the two should coexist relatively copacetically, hopefully. So I move the approval of the lease.
Second.
This also has to go to the town council since it's, it's a new lease of town property. And I guess we're recommending it to the town council, so. Second. Second, on the motion, Kathleen seconded and further discussion? All in favor? That's I. Now, the new item I just, we just added to the agenda. In a prior meeting, we had approved the purchase of three new police cars. The, the cars don't come with all the emergency equipment that's required to be added to them. So there's a proposal to enter into a contract with Specialty Warning Systems in the amount of $34,951.18 to the installation of emergency equipment on three newly purchased police vehicles. Is that, is the contract on the tablets, Sucker? I suppose it is.
Yes. I, it was added, my understanding. Do you have it there, Kathleen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Well, not that, I'm sorry, not the contract, but the, the items themselves. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. The description of the items?
Yep, we have it. Yep.
There's three different vehicles, car eight, staff three, attention.
We have those.
Okay.
Questions about the, this item?
I'm here.
Is Andrew?
Here he is.
Captain Walsh. Thank you. If you have any questions, Andrew is here to, to answer questions about the, the item. No questions, Andrew. So I move to approve this contract for the Specialty Warning Systems.
Thank you.
Do you have, I need a second and a vote.
Second here.
Nick seconds for the discussion. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Okay. Going back to the item eight, there's tax over payments on the tablets. I think one real estate and a few automobile. Any questions? I move we approve those refunds of tax over payments.
Second.
Kathleen seconds for the discussion. All in favor? Aye, that's, then there's a, only one contract on $10,000 on the, on the tablet? I, so any questions about the contract? Legal fees are on the tablet? Any questions about the legal fees? I move we approve the legal fees on the tablets? Second.
Second.
Kathleen seconds. That's all. That's unanimous. That brings us to Selectman's comments. I will make a few comments. As I said last night, our numbers continue to be sort of flat. Although the, a bit of an uptick in Connecticut. Governor said yesterday, he's, what were his words? He's a little anxious. We, we probably will see an uptick with the school vacations coming up. But hospitalizations are down, so the governor's not overly concerned. When the governor's a little anxious, I'm a little anxious. So, but I think our, our vaccination clinics are going very well. We're going to vaccinate 750 tomorrow at Lapham. The, there's great availability for vaccinations in the 45 and older age group. Stanford Hospital in particular has stood up a second mass vaccination operation in South Stanford. And I went to their Stanford Hospital Clinic on Saturday and got my second shot and they're very efficient. And there's, I, I think you, you should be able to find appointments in the next couple of weeks if you're in that age bracket. Walgreens locally, and I think CVS is adding vaccinations. So there's a lot of vaccination availability now. We're continuing our testing, although we're beginning to wonder if, I, I should mention too, the, the vaccination clinic is putting a bit of a strain on our health department. It requires quite a bit of staffing and quite a bit of work. So after April 1st, I think we've got to begin to consider whether we should be in the business of vaccinations. It's very convenient for our residents, but it's also it's a bit of a strain. So. Let's see. The comment I, I mentioned, we received an email addressed to the Board of Selectmen. I, I think the author, whose name is Craig Bluma from Valley Road, expected this to be a comment to the Board of Selectmen for today's meeting. Mr. Bloom is concerned about the impact of the proposed five pickleball courts at Mead Park in terms of various concerns about the noise effect, the loss of tennis facilities, parking impact. He's concerned that the process was, was perhaps not transparent or diligent enough. You know, these pickleball courts have been in the works for quite some time. And I think the concern about impact on tennis, there's plenty of availability of tennis now that we're making the high school courts available on a reservation basis for residents only. And if you get a tennis permit from Mead, it's also good at the high school. This particular court that is being converted to five pickleball courts was in very poor shape. So we really didn't have that much availability from that court before. So Mr. Bloom's concerns, I, I, I don't think we share, at least Tiger and I. Tiger is available for questions on this. But I think pickleball is becoming very popular and a lot of people are, are very, very anxious to have these pickleball courts built. So if you have any questions for Tiger on this item and.
Just for clarification, Tiger, at Mead Park, how many tennis courts do we have? And, and we're looking to remove five for the pickleball courts?
No, we're removing one. We have nine, we have eight, we have eight, eight clay and one on a hard surface or a all-season surface. The all-season surface is, well, it's beyond repair right now. Tree roots have damaged the undercarriage, the asphalt underneath it. And it needs to be removed. And that's the one that we're looking to take out as well as the, the playback area. But we're, we're reinstalling the playback area.
Right. So just, it's one tennis court for five pickleball courts. Okay. And, and so that leaves the, how many clay did you say we have?
Eight.
Eight. Okay. And how many do we have at the high school? How many tennis courts?
Seven. It's seven.
Okay. And then the one other question I saw from this gentleman was, has this, the pickleball ball been, is there a line item in terms of our capital expenditures or is it included in something else?
It was, it was, it was included as part of the, the Hardshue Tennis Court reconstruction. And then we were asked by Park and Rec in May of 19 to look at possibly putting in pickleball at the time. So then we looked at it and we determined that in order to put the pickleball courts in, we would have to utilize the budget for reconditioning of the Hardshue Courts for the installation of the pickle since we need to put in an entire new surface. So it was included in the 19 fiscal budget. The Board of Finance actually made an amendment to the bond resolution to include pickleball. And I believe September or October of 19 to include pickleball in that resolution that was, was formulated. And then after that time, we started looking at different ways to do it than COVID hit for the year. And now we're ready to go forward. So it's been a long process.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Welcome.
Anything further on pickleball, Nick?
No.
My next item is, there's been a lot of commentary about the Board of Finance actions on the Board of Education budget. You know, the Board of Finance began back in October with their budget review and the COVID situation has really required a lot of consideration as to when you do what, you know, we, we're actually a town that's early with our budget process. Other towns are, don't start until February and March. And the fact that we're getting so much federal money out of this American Recovery Act, more than we perhaps expected, suggests that, you know, it's appropriate that we really look at what the COVID expenses for next fiscal year for the schools will really entail. So the Board of Finance actions defer action on those COVID items until April and May, as we did last year when we approved a non, what's the word, recurring, non-lapsing?
Lapsing.
Non-lapsing fund of 1.5, you know, last year we approved $1.9 million for COVID expenses. So there's, there's no question at all, the town's going to completely fund necessary COVID expenses net of grants that are being received from the federal government and the state of Connecticut. And so I just think, you know, people need to really understand that our Board of Finance, which is probably one of the most talented Board of Finances in the country, has, has been very deliberate and very considerate of the, of the need. And, and will do what's necessary. And I think the town council is prepared to do the same. Obviously, Dr. Lutzky and his entire team need to be praised for what they've done with our schools, keeping them open and keeping, keeping people comfortable and safe. And then there's the issue of the Internal Service Fund, which quite honestly, the Board of Finance last year took a step. And this is kind of a further step to, to simply say that, as, you know, we've done a lot of research on the subject to understand what other towns that have self-insured plans for both the Board of Ed and the town do. It's simply a question of how much money you reserve for health plan obligations. And Kathleen has worked on this in the past several years on the town council with me. And this, this is an issue of simply being wise about how much we reserve for expenses. You know, it's, it's kind of crazy when you have 18 or $19 million of annual expected health expenses between the town and the Board of Ed employees to want to reserve six or seven or eight million dollars. It's just totally crazy. Last year, the Board of Ed took $2 million out of the reserve, which some questioned at the time, why would you do that? When the whole purpose of reserves is to smooth the effective changes in healthcare. Both the town and the Board of Ed have done very well with self-insurance rather than having fully insured plans and, or going to the state program, which some towns have done. So I think it's unfair to, to criticize the Board of Finance for wanting to take this step. And it's entirely legal, entirely, I think, consistent with what other towns are doing. And, and without any risk to either the employees or the Board of Ed members. So I just want to make those comments. I think. So, um, I just want to make those comments. I think, um. Town Council proceed with their process, but the Board of Finance and the Town Council will return to these items in, uh, in April and May. And, uh, and we will be totally, uh. Totally funded for COVID expenses. I also wanted to comment, um, the greenhouse at Nature Center is scheduled for demolition. Um, there's a resident who, um, surprisingly advertised, uh, the, uh. Uh, greenhouse, uh. To the public to be available, to be picked up for free. Um, that really is kind of surprising that someone would advertise our town property to be picked up for free. It's not that simple. You know, the, the, anything this old that has, um, has, uh. Hazardous substances, you can't simply remove and, um, and preserve. You have to, it's costly to, uh, to remove this kind of structure. So, um, I just want to mention, I think the, uh, the efforts to try to preserve something, um, that has a great cost. To simply remove, um, is, um, unlikely to. Be able to be done. And, um, I think that demolition is, is on schedule for. I think April, April third, April tenth and, um. So also, um, we have a debt offering. We're completing the, uh, the work on and should be up to market next week. Um, those are my comments. Kathleen or Nick, do you have anything you want to?
Nothing here.
Just, just maybe a couple of, um, things on, on that demolition. Just correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the last meeting we had, didn't we say there might be some issues with, uh, asbestos or some other things that you just. Would rather not have anybody else touch except the professionals?
That's the point. I mean, we, we can't let some, touch something on town property that's going to create hazardous situation.
Right.
Unfortunately, these old buildings have asbestos and other materials that, uh.
Right.
Have to be properly handled and, um.
It's a safety issue. Right, yeah.
It was asbestos and lead.
Yeah, right. Okay, yeah.
We're, we're responsible from cradle to grave for those materials.
Absolutely.
It's not as easy as just coming in and taking it, taking it away.
It's like, uh, it's like the, uh. What's the, what's the place next to the Powerhouse Theater? Called the Potty Shed?
Correct.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, the, the Potty Shed lost its, lost its floor a few weeks ago and we have to, we, you had to go in there and old buildings have. Have old materials that you have to be very careful and it's expensive to, uh, to pay the price to. Do what's right.
Right. Um, second thing, just two more things quickly, um, on the debt offering and you were kind enough to send us the draft of the, uh. The Moody's presentation and I would just, I'm sorry, I didn't get to late last night, but you, you may have already submitted it. But I would just add on the administrative officer page where you have, uh, the First Selectman Administrative Officer as CFO. Um, just maybe just add that, you know, the, that individual has background in Town Council, Board of Ed. And, uh, and Chamber of Commerce, uh, just like the others also list some backgrounds. So just, that would be one.
Linda's still on? Linda, I, I think those changes are being made because, uh, Linda's biography was expanded appropriately.
Okay, yeah. All right, good.
Yes, I'll get those changes to, um.
That matters. Yeah, they like to see that stuff. Okay, that's great. And then, um, you know, just, I just add to your comments, Kevin, about, uh, the issues between. Uh, the Board of Finance and, and, and the Board of Ed, both great, um, groups of, uh, individuals. And, and I just want to say that, uh, not only is it legal, I think, in terms of what is being proposed, but it's also fiscally prudent and responsible. And I think that's important, uh, that everybody understands that. And so, um. I, I, I think that, uh, everybody is, uh, doing the right thing, uh, in terms of moving, moving forward. And while we all have to deal with criticism, uh, at some points in, in our, uh, political lives and, and careers. Um, I think that everybody has very good intentions here and, and so hopefully we can move forward with that in mind.
Thank you, Kathleen. I think that's, uh. Appropriate that everybody realizes how hard our Board of Finance works and how diligent they are to do the right thing.
And the Board of Ed.
And the Board of Ed. But, you know, again, I, I, there's a bit of a feeling that, um. You know, the, the letter that was written said, we're the experts and you, you, you got to approve our budgets, that request. I mean, that's just not the way the system works. Board of Finance has a role.
Yeah.
Has a role. And, um, and on the other hand, um, as Todd LaVera has said, um, we've tremendously supported. Board of Ed throughout this COVID situation and there's no doubt we will do it, totally support them.
Yeah.
Here, whatever that necessity requires, so. With that, I, coming up on nine thirty, I think that's, uh, all we have for today. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.